The mayors, we have condolences.
Through the chair, I have a condolence when you're ready.
Yes, you have one?
Yes.
You can read, I read. Yes, start.
Okay, sure. Okay, I just have a condolence that I'd like to share with everybody tonight. Mark Amos was born on the 24th of November 1956. He came from a large family and had five sisters and was the third child. Mark and his sisters were raised by the single father. Mark grew up in Punchbowl with his family until he was around eight years old, when he had to move into a specialised care home for his safety. When he was a very young child, he was always running away and walking the streets. He was never to be held in one spot, and this continued till the day he passed. He attended a special school when he was young, for a time, however, school was not for him. Mark moved to Liverpool around 25 years ago. He quickly learnt the area from the hospitals, police stations, food courts and volunteer kitchens. He used to get on a train and loved catching trains everywhere. He would often get a train to Bankstown or Punchbowl, as that is where he grew up. He loved to be out and about and was often out till early hours of the morning, talking, walking and eating. He is a well-known member of the community in Liverpool. Everybody knew Mark. Some good stories, some not so good, but all very well-known. And one story I'd like to share with everyone is one day I was walking through Liverpool. I was actually a new resident to Liverpool, so this would have been about 12 years ago. Mark spotted me and he pointed right at me and he called out, "Jesus loves you", and I never forgot him after that. A memorial was held for Mark at the Hilda Davis Hall on 22nd February 2020. May he rest in eternal peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Another one about Wendy Tesoriyan, passed away on 25th February 2020. Wendy was a branch librarian doing an outstanding job at Carnage Hill. Followed her ambitions to make libraries invited space for the community, particularly for young people. Wendy was working with youth and schools to support their involvement in the library, as well as working with the Carnage Hill as a team. Wendy had worked in local government libraries for nearly 20 years and loved her job. She really wanted to make a difference in Carnage Hill, and the library was running extremely well under the games. The news of Wendy's bust is shocking and distressing to staff at the Liverpool City Council. Wendy will remind her for her community spirit and influence. On behalf of the Liverpool City Council, I humble express my deepest condolences to Wendy, husband David, and her daughters Alison and all of her family and friends during this difficult time. May she rest in the peace. Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
Yes, I'll declare an interest in COMF 01, non-procurnary, non-significant. One of the organisations that submitted an EOI, I'm the chair of that organisation.
I also have a...
I'll leave the room.
I also have a declaration, non-procurnary, less than significant, COM 1, grants, donations and corporate sponsorship. I too am also a financial member of one of the organisations that is mentioned in those items, and I will leave the room.
And NOM 04, Mr Deputy Mayor, non-procurnary, less than significant. I live in that area. No property that I own or have interest in or any of my immediate family members were affected by the flooding that recently happened. But because I live in that area, I am declaring a non-procurnary, less than significant.
Any more?
Through the chair, if I may, sorry councillor Blue.
Yeah?
Just in regard to the minutes of the traffic committee, there is a bus zone going on Leacock Lane. I have relatives that live in that street, very close relatives. So I just wanted to put that out there. It's a non-procurnary, less than significant. I wasn't going to really declare that, but in light of what councillor Hachidi just said, I thought maybe I should, because I do have relatives that live in that street. Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
With your indulgence, Deputy Mayor, I've got a motion of urgency, if I can go through that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Point of order.
Just a minute. First of all, we have to confirm mention of minutes, the last one.
Thank you.
Move that way. Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Yes, okay. Now we have the acting CEO, your councillor.
Just a minute. The deputy mayor and councillors have asked me to read this notice of motion on coronavirus. And it states, "We as leaders of the Liverpool City Council are exceptionally proud of the diversity and vibrancy of our city. Proud to be known for our welcoming and inclusive nature and proud of our community spirit. Liverpool's Chinese community, residents and students are an integral part of our community. We know that this is a worrying time for us all, when many are concerned for the health of family, friends and loved ones back home in China. Our support is more important than ever before. Many businesses here in Australia have been affected. We as councillors and Liverpool City Council stand together in solidarity with our Chinese community and the need for all of us to support our local restaurants. Madam Mayor, through Deputy Mayor, I seek your support and other councillors to send a letter to the Chinese ambassador and council general expressing our condolences for all the lives that have been lost and our full support at these extremely difficult times for the Republic of China and its people."
Thank you. Now presentation, Miss Suzanne Dillor. Where is she?
Mr Deputy Mayor, while the speaker's getting up, I believe it's in your discretion, there were some residents who registered to speak, but unfortunately because of the three-speaker rule that we have, we're not able to speak. I believe it's your discretion to allow others to speak, should you so choose. Would you be willing to use your discretion to allow others that registered to speak, although they didn't make the three-speaker cutoff?
Okay, thank you.
Is it just one?
Three.
Three? That's your call.
We'll see.
Let him talk. Yeah. About the three, speaking four or three agains?
Yes. No, no, only two. Yes, you can start. Three minutes.
Yeah, I think he said no. No, he said no to more speakers.
If it is not...
Urgency motion.
Yeah, so I'd like to move an urgency motion, Mr...
Up to me, if it's allowed or not. That's what I know.
Yep.
And I ask.
So I'm requesting to move an urgency motion. Can I put the urgency motion up and then you can rule whether it's urgent or not?
Just a minute, councillor, I'd like you to...
Yes.
That's fine. Yes, okay, I'll get the urgency motion up. The urgency motion... Mr Deputy Mayor, can I read it out and then you can rule if it's urgent or not? Yep. That council one, direct the CEO to immediately enter into negotiations with the land owner/purchaser of the current site which houses the Liverpool Animal Shelter. Sorry, I'm moving this urgency motion myself and councillor Rhodes. It's a joint move. Sorry, direct the CEO to immediately enter into negotiations with the land owner/purchaser of the current site which houses the...
Who seconded?
I am a joint mover on this motion. Thank you.
Okay.
So I'll eventually get to read it.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to second that.
Can I read it out?
Seeing as they asked for...
Direct the CEO to immediately enter into negotiations with the land owner/purchaser of the current site which houses the Liverpool Animal Shelter with the aim of: A) reach an agreement to extend the current lease on the shelter in the short term; B) discussing the possibility of providing an animal shelter for the long term on the current site; C) direct the CEO to write to Blacktown City Council advising them that Liverpool City Council will not take up their proposed offer to utilise the new to-be-built animal shelter; D) simultaneously with point 1b, investigate and report back to council in the April meeting concept plans for a new facility within our LGA on the land currently owned by council; E) direct the CEO to report back to council on medium-term options within our LGA, should that be required; and F) further investigate if the Western Sydney Parklands will not encourage a wildlife sanctuary into the Liverpool LGA section of the parklands, a possible plan to include a wildlife sanctuary in an animal precinct close to the animal shelter. That's the urgency motion, Mr Deputy Mayor, moved by myself and councillor Rhodes.
I give the acting CEO who want to say something.
Yes?
Yep.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Paragraph 8.3 of our Code of Meeting Practice, Part B states, "The business is to be considered as ruled by the chairperson to be of great urgency on the grounds that it requires a decision by the council before the next scheduled ordinary meeting of council." Can you clarify, please, the basis of the urgency?
The urgency is the shelter will be closed before the next council meeting, so this is council's last opportunity to actually do it, so there's no time. And as you know, Mr Reckling CEO, I don't have a direction that I can give to officers to stop something. I'm just a councillor. Given that the next scheduled meeting is in March, the end of March, given the shelter will be closing middle of March, we need to discuss this item today.
Okay, what we can do. Okay. Okay. I don't think this is urgent. But as I think, it's not urgent. That's why. It's urgent? No, allowed. Why not?
I'd be happy to second that.
Yes?
Being seconded by councillor Rhodes, councillor Rhodes was a joint mover, and I think joint mover and author of this.
That's right.
Is that correct? I'd be happy to second it.
Councillor, I previously...
Who seconded?
Can we have joint seconding, myself and councillor Hal?
Ask him.
Can I speak for the motion, Mr Deputy Mayor?
Yep.
Thank you. On two occasions, and hopefully, and I'm hoping tonight, the end result of this is council gets together and supports the motion, and it's actually unanimous decision of council. Previously, on two occasions, and unfortunately, it was voted down, and the animal shelter was to be moved to Blacktown. Yes, we know about the current site, yes, we know that there's new owners there, but my understanding is that some options were presented. We've all seen the reports, and pretty much it was, they're your only options, if I read that report correctly. In the meantime, what's happened, and for the record, no, I didn't vote to close it down, if anyone is asking. What's happened in the meantime since, and I want to thank Susan and all, or Suzanne and all, everyone involved from the community to then bring it to our attention. It's quite funny, we had a storm a couple of weeks ago in Austral, but my God, I think it was on the back of the animal shelter issue that we had, because this thing just gathered momentum, kept going, kept going, kept going, and it's still going, so congratulations to everyone involved there. When it was brought to our attention, yes, councillor Rhodes and myself then took, pretty much grabbed it and said, "What can we do?" And in the space of a few days and meeting with some residents and some people, we were able to work out that the current owner would be more than happy, sorry, the current purchaser of the site would be more than happy to get an extension or give council an extension on the lease and not shut down the shelter in March. Now, I don't believe that was put to us as part of an option when the report was given to us. Things could have been different back then, but I have it on good word now, and no, I have not approached the owner. No, I have not met with the owner, I don't think that I should as a councillor. But the owner is willing to talk with council and will talk with council now, if someone was to ring him, the new owner, and work out terms to keep the animal shelter open. The new owner will also discuss moving forward, if council wants to keep a shelter on that property, more than happy to actually build the shelter that council needs on that property. And when it was told that, you know, the figures that were flying around, the person then was even more excited, thinking, gee, I can make a quick buck here because $17 million, the reports, they could probably deliver it for a lot less than that. Council, there's a lot being said, a lot being done, and we can keep going around in circles. But what's important here is, we do have another option, and most of us said there wasn't any other options. There is another option that I am proposing, and that option is number one, and I suggest, and I can't tell anyone what time to ring this person or if they have their contact details, but tomorrow morning I'd be on the blower to that person saying, listen, let's talk, sorry, on the telephone to that person. Let's talk, what can we do? And let's ensure that we can keep the animals here in Liverpool. It is unfair on our residents to have to drive down the M5, up the M7, across the M4, probably then through Blacktown Road, to pick up an animal they've just lost or has stray. Yes, I know, we're putting in interim measures and we're trying to keep the animal here and we'll scan and whatnot, but being an animal owner who actually lives really close to the shelter, when your animal does go for a walk, they generally do call, and lucky we've got some really good vets in the area there, and they say, "Your dog has arrived. Unfortunately, we can only keep it till the morning, otherwise it's got to go to the pound." And then if it does go to the pound, that could be another day or two before we can actually get out to pick up the animal. In relation to, just for clarification on the actual motion, we also attempted once upon a time, and point five, for the animal sanctuary, councillor Rhodes and we all attempted to have the koala sanctuary here in Western Sydney Parklands. Unfortunately, at the time, that was defeated also. It's great, the koalas are wonderful. The one up the central coast is a tourist attraction. Why don't we go out there and lobby for one here in Western Sydney Parklands? And I think this is now a perfect opportunity to do that. In relation, just for clarification on some of the options, one, we don't want animals to go to Blacktown. I think that's, hopefully, going to be unanimous here tonight within council. All goes well, we buy time at the Brinjelly site. Let's look at the short-term options, what can we do? Yes, probably just extend the lease. What are the medium-term options till we build our own? That's something that needs to come back to us. But our preferred option is ensuring every single animal that's picked up in Liverpool stays in Liverpool and the land owner could come and get it from Liverpool. I think we need to, as councillors, we have an obligation to our residents, our rate payers, that this facility stay open. One thing was asked, what's next? Are we going to move the customer service centre to Blacktown if they then come up with some new facility? Are our residents going to have to drive to Blacktown to pay their rates or talk to our planners? It's our responsibility, let's keep it here. And councillors, I urge every single one of you to put your hand up when the vote comes forward.
I'd like to speak to the motion.
Yes.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, and I'm absolutely thrilled. I think I'm going to become known as the third-time lucky councillor if we get this through tonight. It seems every motion that I put up in support for the constituents takes three times to get the council to actually stop and listen to it. But just to put it into perspective, more than 62% of Australian householders own a pet. And of these, 38% are dog owners, for people who want to know, and 29% are cat owners. In addition to this, 59 of the people who do not currently own a pet admit that they'd like to own one in the near future. Pet ownership in Liverpool LGA is a high priority item. And what they have been telling me from the initial time that this was put up in council and what they told me when we put in a rescission motion to have council reverse their decision, and what they are still telling me now is that they want a welfare shelter, the animal welfare shelter to be in the Liverpool LGA. We pride ourselves on being the third city of Sydney, but we do not consider that means that we have to provide the services one would expect in the third city of Sydney. And to ignore the service requests of our residents and what they want in our city. The problem that I see if we do move to Blacktown is that one of the largest problems we have at the moment is irresponsible pet owners. If they are moving house, do you honestly believe that they are going to get into their car and drive all the way to Blacktown if they do not want to continue responsible ownership of their pet? If we move our services to Blacktown, it is extremely difficult to get to Blacktown. People are not going to be taking long-day train trips to connect to get over to Blacktown. Even in a car, it is an enormous trip. In Liverpool, we are trying to encourage a walkable city where people won't even have cars. What are we thinking? We have to put an animal welfare shelter in our Liverpool LGA. In reference to point five, about the suggestion that was, or the motion that was moved by council, that we investigate the Western Sydney Parklands to see if they would encourage a wildlife animal sanctuary into the Liverpool LGA section of the parklands, I'm not sure. I believe that was coming back to council, perhaps at the next meeting, as to how those investigations have panned out. And it seems to me to be a good combination if we were to make an animal precinct and include within that their own animal welfare shelter and a wildlife sanctuary. We are creating something of great value in Liverpool, and I'm sure that the constituents of Liverpool would be forever grateful. It's difficult to get across to council what the constituents actually want and need. I can go back and I can report again the number of pet owners that we have. And when you look at those statistics, it's extremely important that we service their needs. Let's get on with it, let's put an animal welfare shelter back in Liverpool LGA. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd...
It's not allowed only for two. Who mentioned the motion? And the rose. Now we put it on...
Okay, well, I'd like to... I'd like to speak, yeah. Just for clarification under, secondly, at point four of the Code of Practice Meeting, only the mover of a motion referred to, or the urgency motion, can speak to the motion before this... Okay, all right, well, in terms of that procedure, am I able to make some suggestions to this NOM? Am I allowed to help improve it? I think what, from what I heard, we're trying to come up with an option here that all of council can agree on, though I think your words are along that line. I want to make a couple of suggestions here, and if you're willing to take them on, fantastic. Otherwise, we can move on. But if we can put them up on the screen, let's have a look. And I'd be very grateful if you had a look and considered them as part of your motion. Yep?
Yeah, happy to look at anything, I'm just worried if you're going to improve this or...
No, 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 they're all very constructive. So, look, the first point there is quite similar to what you guys have suggested. In the short term, we seek an alternative rehoming centre services arrangement. We've just heard that, it sounds like the existing owners are open to that. In the medium term, we look at demountable kennels. Now, they're not as bad as they sound. Other councils have used them and have explored that as an option, perhaps as an interim way of, you know, housing our animals. The next two, I will, former companion animal advisory committee and highest suitably qualified companion animal public liaison officer. My thinking around those is, as we've heard tonight, we weren't given the options, we weren't given all the options, all the questions weren't asked, and the public weren't informed, and I think it's fair to say that. If we had a companion animal advisory committee, which Camden have, quite a lot of councils have, you've got vets, you've got animal behaviourists, you've got experts in that field, and you've also got community people on that committee. A decision like this would have went through that committee, the public would have known about it, we would have been well-informed, and we would have made a much, much better decision in regards to this issue. And I think we also would have made better decisions in regards to other issues around animal welfare. Everyone knows I've been banging on about stray cats and feral cats. I think we would have got a better resolution on that if we had had a companion animal advisory committee. So this is about changing the culture and the governance of council around animal management and animal welfare. I think we do a good job, I think we can do a better job, and I think we can strive towards best practice in this area. And a big part of that is having a companion animal advisory committee. And the other bits there are just about having better reporting. If you have a look at Camden's annual report, they've got much better reporting in regards to what happens to animals, where they go, if we rehouse them. And if you scroll down a bit there, there's a couple of other things. I think we should lobby our fellow Wesrock councils, including Blacktown, to adopt a no-kill policy. And you can probably get rid of the bottom one now. So, yeah, look, yeah, look, so I think the main bit there is about a companion animal advisory committee. If there's one thing I've learned over the last week or so, it's that we have some very well-informed, very passionate residents here who know quite a bit about best practice in regards to animal welfare. And I think we should harness them, and we should use them, and we should have them on a committee. And I'd be much, much more grateful if we had community involvement in these decisions earlier on. Thank you.
Now we asked on, do you accept it?
I'm just wondering, I'm wondering if he wants to be the chair of that committee, because that'd be funny.
I'd learn a lot.
And in relation to, and on being serious now, in relation to the first bit, I think that's covered in the initial one. The advisory committee, absolutely, I don't have an issue with that whatsoever. Maybe councillor, say it, say it.
Yes, I think that is a good suggestion, but I would change the terminology of it. I think that it should be...
This one we're talking about?
Yep. Form a community companion animal advisory committee. We need the members of our community having a stronger voice in our council and...
So there would be members of the community, there'd also be animal experts and vets and that kind of thing as well?
So it's a community committee, another council community committee.
Experts in the community.
The companion animal public liaison officer, I think the people at the... The companion animal public liaison officer, I think the people at the, um, at the current pound are doing a fantastic job, isn't that their role, what they're currently doing?
Yeah, look, uh, they, they do a great job. Um, I, I keep looking to Camden, because Camden won an award last year. Um, and the, the, while we have animal rangers, um, they have a, a particular person in a particular role, um, whose job is basically about better educating, um, the community, um, trying to rehouse animals. And I believe this person has even gone to, you know, someone's house to fix a hole in their fence to stop their animal escaping. So it's sort of a, a community companion animal person that educates, informs, and, and helps rehouse animals.
Yeah, no dramas, throw that, put that in. Next, sorry, can you?
Should, Tony?
Yes.
You accept it?
Yeah, we just comes from, and accepting one by one, if that's okay, Mr Chair?
As we put it on for...
No, no, not yet, not yet.
So this one, if you have a look at our annual report, there's a couple of lines, yep?
Yeah, the reporting, no dramas, uh, request Wesrock, no problems. But then there was one, you still want us to go to Blacktown, see, I thought, I'd have to read your motion for...
Well, I took out, I thought we might want to go on a tour to Blacktown to see...
No.
Right, now, I, okay, so you, you're happy to accept those?
Okay?
Yep.
Now we put it on vote, who's with?
Just in relation to that, can I, just in closing, can we close? Are we allowed to write a response or not?
I, I have a question.
Can I add a suggestion, if we're two questions?
We, we put it on vote, who's...
Well, it's a point, sorry, it's a point of order.
Yes.
So I've asked some questions earlier today that I don't know if they've made their way to you, just around the contract, um, my interpretation of the contract and whether we needed to do point two. And I, I, I don't want to, I can't say much, I'll come on and have a chat.
I'm, I'm, I'm about to ask the questions, has council entered into a contract with Blacktown council?
Yeah.
Have, have...
Tony, them want to...
Sorry, can I ask, and this will answer your question, has council got con- contract obligations with Blacktown City Council at the moment for the new facility that they are building, signed, sealed and everything else?
Through the, through the chair, um, council has executed a, an agreement with Blacktown, but the commencement of that agreement only happens when Blacktown council execute it, and that hasn't happened to date, so the answer to your question is no.
So the good thing is, we don't have a contract and it's going to cost us nothing if we do this, so, and thank you to the staff that actually responded, um, where's Mr Vishwa, manager, he's run away, um, for responding to the questions, which then told us that there was, uh, nothing in that, do we get a right of...
So before you go into that, I have one final suggestion. Um, given that we're already advocating to Wesrock to adopt a no-kill policy, I know we've previously taken a policy around, um, amending the companion animal to sort of better define, um, how council should respond to feral cats. Um, and I would like to suggest that we do the same i- in terms of a no-kill policy and take that to local government, New South Wales as well, to have that as a, as a policy. To, to suggest all councils have a, a no-kill policy.
Okay.
Just if I may, through you deputy, if I may just speak a little bit, won't take too much of your time, in support of the motion?
Yes.
I won't say much, but I do absolutely support that, and, and thank you councillor Hachiri. I'd like to point out again that I did not support, nor I voted for that shelter, I am absolutely glad that it will be in Liverpool, and above all, there'll be no penalties for Blacktown council, which is great, because it is ratepayers' money. And finally, I'd like to thank the gallery for being here tonight and doing people's power. Thank you. Thank you.
Now we put it on vote, who's with? All of us, except councillor Jeff, Jeff, thank you. Ah, Peters, yeah. Stand up? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Allah. Chief Executive...
I'm sorry, um, Mr Deputy Mayor, I have one further urgency motion with your indulgence.
What?
Um, so I believe that there was, uh, legislation introduced into the State Parliament, uh, yesterday that, um, looks to, uh, to, to sort of, uh, to build community trust in their local representatives, particularly those on council. Um, they introduced, led, uh, sort of legislation to New South Wales Parliament to disqualify real estate agents and property developers from holding the office of councillor or mayor. And I would like to propose that, um, this council is on record as supporting that.
Through Deputy Mayor, councillor, can you again make explicit reason for the urgency that it can't be considered before the next meeting of council?
Uh, yes, acting CEO, as I mentioned, the legislation has been introduced into New South Wales Parliament, um, and is being currently considered by, um, by the parliament, so I believe it is, um, is of great urgency that we are on record in terms of, um, our position on this particular issue as it affects local government before, you know, the, the matter is, is through parliament.
Can you clarify, or do you know when that is expected to reach parliament? Or be considered by parliament?
Pardon?
When will parliament, will parliament consider that, there are any...
It's currently being considered now.
So do, do we have a date of when they're actually going to take a vote on this, or? I'm just trying to work out urgency as well. And then, and then make a declaration of interest if we are doing a...
As I understand, it's not urgent, okay? We keep it for next time. Thank you.
Of thank you Deputy Mayor.
Okay. Now, Chief Executive Officer reports, CEO one.
Move that way, thank you, Mr...
Seconded.
Yep, thank you. Seconded, okay. Number two, City...
Deputy Mayor, can I suggest we move forward an item?
Yes, why not?
And that item number is...
Number what?
The, can I suggest we move forward an item for discussion?
Yes.
Being E-Gro zero seven?
Zero seven?
E-Gro zero seven.
Seconded, thank you, Mr Deputy...
Huh? Who's seconded?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Zero seven. Look, yellow, zero seven, which page? Huh? Ah, which number? Zero seven. Find out which page. You know which page? First page. Yes, zero seven. Tony? Yep, yeah, zero seven, we move it, huh? The council endures, huh? As the submission of the, yeah. Yeah. Zero seven, the council endures, which page? Yes, council endures a submission of the page and forward the submission in the Western Sydney. Okay, Tony?
Now I've just moved it forward, anyone can move anything they want, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Okay.
Through you, Mr CEO, to the relevant director, we've heard from speakers and people from, um, obviously our residents tonight. Um, can we start off, I suppose, in a couple of precincts? Uh, Dwyer Road. I note that we have not made any comments on that.
Uh-huh.
I got a general feel from all councillors that we are very supportive of, um, seeing colour on the map for Dwyer Road and not leave it the way it is. Do you have some suggested wording on how we achieve that?
Mr Moore?
Yeah. Through the, uh, through the CEO, um, I guess I haven't turned my mind to exactly what wording would be, I'd probably rather take some suggestions from you, but certainly as, as we pointed out, this is to be council submission, so council is able to, uh, adjust the draft submission that we've put before you in whatever way you would like. Uh, I think the message I was hearing from the community is that they would like Dwyer Road to be considered a priority precinct, like some of the other priority precincts in there, i- in, in the eretropolis. Uh, and that there shouldn't be, you know, that it should move in the same timeframe as those other priority precincts, so perhaps some wording along those lines, that, that the Dwyer Road precinct, uh, should, should, should be considered within the, uh, Western Sydney eretropolis plan as a priority precinct. I wasn't hearing anything, I don't think about, uh, a, a change necessarily to the type of zoning in, in that precinct, but more that it should move, uh, early rather than later.
Now, I, just in relation to that, and sorry councillor, um, now we want to actually see a rezoning, not leave it, uh, that, not bring it forward and tell us in five years you're going to do this. What I'd like to see for Dwyer Road is as part of this plan, the government say, yes, we are looking at having, for example, don't know if this is what they're going to put there, employment land there. We also do understand, yes, it's employment land, yes, we agree it's going to be employment land, but obviously, as everybody is aware, a timeframe then needs to be worked out to deliver the services and infrastructure to be able to put a D A in for employment land. But I think it's important on us, in the strongest words possible to the state, um, to say, as part of this plan, we want the colour changed on that map, we don't want it left the way it is, and it needs to be treated as part of the eretropolis, not just a little hanger-onner, um, you know, that's just left behind. So happy to get whatever words you like to ensure that that is the outcome that we're lobbying for.
Can I make a suggestion perhaps?
Wait a minute to find who's moving and who's seconded.
No, I want to make a suggestion to the change of that, uh, what the wording that is there.
Change?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, that the Dwyer Road precinct should be included in the, uh, developments to be done before the airport opens.
Well, Mr Liberty, I'm quite happy to support that.
You support, but who move it and who's seconded?
Just, just on...
Yeah.
Can I suggest we move in a committee a whole, so we're not looking for movers, seconders and rules of debate and everything else? Is that okay, Mr, Mr Chair?
Yes.
Okay, so, yep, four, so we're in a committee a whole now, so obviously the rules of debate don't apply anymore, and we can pretty much have a discussion more than being restricted?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. Yes. Yes, Tony.
Yeah, we're not, we're not working, but anyway, yeah, we, we are now. In relation to the, what councillor just suggested, yes, like, a- all we need to do is get the words right, we all know that we want that to happen. What are, what is the correct approach to ensure that happens? Because this is going to a bureaucrat in town, um, and we just need to ensure that our position is clear, we're not going to get an opportunity again to express what we want. Um, so how do you want that worded to ensure that happens? Nothing against bureaucrats.
Through, through the CEO, um, I mean, I, I think with the wording you've got there, it is sort of making it clear that you want it to have a certain, um, I mean, the other, the other point you mentioned is you want it to have an employment focus, so perhaps that's missing. The other thing we can do is, um, go with your direction here, share with you a further draft of the submission between now and when it's lodged. I can tell you that, uh, today, uh, there was an extension granted for submissions, um, by the Minister for Planning of two weeks. So, uh, we have a bit of time to, to massage, massage this with councillors, and as I say, this is your submission. Um, so, you know, you've, you've, you've made it pretty clear what the thrust of the change is, I think we can work with that.
Beautiful, so we've now got time, and we're not restricted till tomorrow, I thought it was, to have this in. So we can then have our discussion between councillors and staff to ensure that we get it right. But the gist is, for Dwyer Road, we want to see it happen now, not ten years down the track. Yep, beautiful.
Okay.
In relation... In relation to Ludanum and the Ludanum Village, um, my understanding it's currently R2 and they're looking to go on Agri. Where's the relevant director?
Mr Moore?
Oh, there he is. Sorry, through you, Mr CEO, acting CEO, sorry. Ludanum Village was spoken about, can you shed some light on that, please?
Through the acting CEO, the draft eretropolis plan and, uh, planning package, uh, identifies that Ludanum Village is proposed to be rezoned to, uh, the Agri Business Precinct, and what you've heard, uh, today is the community in that area wanting council to consider whether it gets, you remain as R2 rather than, uh, the proposed zoning of Agri Business, so that could be added into the submission if council wishes.
Can I get that added in, please? Because I would prefer they kept their R2 than Agri Business there, so can we add that in? Yep?
Yep, um...
Yes.
I'd just like to speak in support, um...
Yeah, I've got more.
Of this, um, oh, we're still throwing things in, are we?
Yes.
All right. Well, hold on.
Through the CEO, I'll continue on whilst councillor Haggerty's gathering his thoughts. Um, we do have in there the problem that we've got with the, uh, boundary for the floodlines with South Creek, Thompson Creek, Winamatta South Creek precinct. Um, have we got that fully covered so that, um, we, we've, we, we need that with greater definition as to what flood boundary we're talking about perhaps?
Mr Smith, can you advise, please?
Through the acting CEO, uh, in the draft submission, uh, councils, um, noted that the, uh, South Creek Winamatta precinct is proposed to be rezoned to Environment and Recreation under the Airport Plan and the Draft SEP. The recommendation, uh, to the planning partnership, uh, is that if that zoning stays, that acquisition be identified, similar to Thompson's Creek. If the government is of the opinion that they can't or don't want to, uh, acquire all of that land, our recommendation is that zoning shrinks, uh, down so that, uh, the utility of the land that has a flood effectation that can be managed, uh, is not burdened by that zone.
And on the same sort of matter, um, the businesses that are operating from parcels of land in that area where they may have structures built in the areas that are going to be reclaimed, um, I have a difficulty with that in that, uh, the, obviously we want businesses in Liverpool. That particular person in this case would be inclined because, yay, his business has been cut in half, what he had there as an operation is no longer workable, and he will have to buy in an area where he can operate that business, but he's not being paid the equivalent because it's going, being acquired by the state government. Is there anything that can be done about that?
Through this acting CEO, our recommendation is that if the government wants to zone land for environment and recreation, our recommendation is it is subject to the compulsory acquisition or the, the acquisition, I shouldn't say compulsory, the acquisition process. Uh, at the moment, the zoning is silent on any acquisition except in the Thompson's Creek precinct. So our recommendation is that clarity is provided on that issue, and our recommendation is, as I said earlier, uh, if the government, uh, is not minded to acquire all of that land within that zone, that the Environment and Recreation Zone is shrunk down, uh, but still sub... subject to acquisition, so that at the end of the day, if the government is wanting to see that broader vision for the South Creek precinct, landowners are not unduly impacted as a result of that decision.
Okay.
Then I have another, if I may, I've still got a few more. I'm hearing from other people, particularly around the Kemp's Creek, Badgeries Creek sort of precincts, where new business operations are coming in under the current zoning, we have a problem where we've got, I don't know how many recycling businesses that have opened up in certain areas, which are not going to be permissible under the new zoning. Is there any way possible that, it's just not planning for the future when we're allowing these types of businesses to come in and operate when we know that it's going to be not allowed, it's not going to be a permissible business, operation, once the zoning is made? So is there anything council can do about that?
Insofar as the land uses that have been approved recently, most of those have not been permissible under council's planning controls, they've been permissible under a state environmental planning policy, and most of those have been determined by the Joint Regional Planning Panel, not council or under delegated authority. In relation to, is there anything that you can do in relation to that? They are approved, so they're entitled to act on that consent and, and be developed. However, in those areas, the Eritropolis Plan identifies them for employment uses, so industrial uses effectively. So at the moment, it's RU4, but these uses that are industrial in nature have been approved as part of the proposal on exhibition now. It is proposing to change that zoning to industrial, so the issues that you've got at the moment with incompatible land uses is managed somewhat.
I also would like recommendation nine. I'm not happy with that. I believe that Liverpool should be doing what is legally required and no more. So I would like to see the mandatory affordable housing targets for new development within the Eritropolis to be in accordance with what the legal requirements are. I don't think that we should be setting higher proportions on, on any other land than what is necessary.
Can I suggest that we just, excuse me, remove the word mandatory? So, so we still, we still set a target of 10%, but it's not a mandatory target. So it's a target, just like I would like to one day be very muscly, that's a target, but it's not something that I probably will achieve.
I'd like it removed altogether.
Given that you're never going to be muscly, I reckon we just remove it. Joke. In, in relation to a few more recommendations, I'd like to see, like to see gone, if that's okay, Mr Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Thanks.
But through the chair, please.
Yeah, through, through you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr Deputy Mayor. I totally support councillor Rhodes, I don't think we should be burdening our rate payers and residents and decreasing their house values by setting a mandatory affordable housing target. There's a SEP in place, the Affordable Housing SEP, and anyone that wants to put affordable housing in has the option to do it. I also believe, and I have objection to recommendation 21, and that recommendation suggests that we adopt a carbon, carbon neutrality target for all new development associated with the Eritropolis. My concern.
Sorry, can I just clarify before you go on?
Yep.
Is that something that, through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, is that something that is a, a target across the board? Is that something that the, you know, that the Department of Planning is aspiring to? Or is it something that has come from residents? Where has that particular recommendation come from?
Mr Smith?
Yeah.
Turn, Mr Smith?
Sorry, through the acting CEO, the current exhibited plan talks about low carbon. What we were suggesting was, given that the Eritropolis Plan and the planning package has all been based on going above business as usual, and similar to other government policies around redevelopments around Central Station, we suggested to council they might want to consider instead of low carbon, zero carbon, but ultimately it's a matter for council whether they want that recommendation point in there or removed.
Thank you, and I think, I, I won't be supportive of the carbon neutrality target. I don't think we should burden our landowners, because anyone going in there looking to purchase and build in there, then needs to take into account the cost of being carbon neutral, and that will mean, from my understanding and research, that land values could be decreased, and I don't want our land values going down. I also don't believe we should be putting a burden on our rate payers out there that nobody else is seeing around here. Just because we're out there, even the government is saying low, as we can see a recommendation 22, let's stick with the low, let's not go to the zero. In relation to 22, we have changed the objective to go from low to zero. I think we stick with the low, let's not go to the zero. In relation to 23, again, zero net carbon emissions, they've met a recommendation, let's stick with the recommendation, let's not go extra. In relation to, this one is a definite no, 33. What we're suggesting here is to allow wind turbines to be permitted with consent in the Eritropolis Corps, in the Eritropolis. Never agree to that. Not even the government has said, let's put wind turbines in there. I don't think we should be having wind turbines in there, permitted with or without consent, just don't allow them. And in relation to the wind turbines, they will reduce the value of land. It's been proven, and if somebody wants to argue the case, I've actually done some research on this, it's quite funny, you're looking at 12% decrease if you're within two kilometres, and it'll affect your property value within 14 kilometres, but then a Canadian Superior Court found in 2013 that that figure could be up to 55% decrease of your land value. So I think if we're just going to go too much in relation to this carbon stuff and neutral and, and whatnot, I think most of our landowners will be paying developers to take over their land instead of the other way around. So I'd like to see that removed if I can. In relation to the, allow agri-business across the whole Eritropolis, it does concern me. Instead of letting it's a part of the Eritropolis, and it concerns me for one reason only, is the conflict of land use if we're going to allow agri-business anywhere across that. Am I reading that right? In our submission, we want to allow agri-business everywhere?
Through the acting CEO, the recommendation is that agricultural land uses remain a permissible land use. We haven't put a timeframe on that, but the reason being is the development of the Eritropolis is likely to take many, many years, and as currently worded, extensive agriculture and intensive plant-based agriculture would be prohibited land uses. So if people in that area, even in the non-initial precincts aren't, oh, sorry, except, I'd have to check with the non-initial precincts, but certainly the initial precincts, those land uses would not be permissible, so they'd be reliant on existing use rights. So it is our recommendation that we remain, we leave in, as per the current LEP, those land uses, and it may be that we amend that recommendation for a certain period of time, like grandfather the clause or something, so that if somebody wants to do cropping or livestock or, and they haven't had that as an existing use right before or a DA before, but it's going to take five or 10 years for it to develop, they can still run agricultural uses on their property.
And again, correct me if I'm wrong, in recommendation 36, we're asking for in the SEP to allow that to happen across all Eritropolis zones. So if it becomes in the SEP, does it then become a problem similar to the recycling plants out there? Because it's a SEP, they can override the currents. So this, the way I'm reading this, is now and into the future and forever, you'll be able to rely on a SEP to do agri-business anywhere in the Eritropolis.
Through the acting CEO, it's, it's not agri-business, it would be agricultural uses. However, I note your point, it's, and it may be, a matter for council, recommendation would be to put a timeframe around that. The concern from staff is remembering that the SEP is going to override our LEP, so this will be the primary planning instrument for this area, and once it's zoned, agricultural land uses will be prohibited in that zone, which is sensible for the, the potential use, but we, we acknowledge that those uses will take a long time to develop, particularly with the provision of infrastructure. So in the meantime, if somebody wants to do an agricultural land use, we think it's sensible that they should be able to do that, but I'd note your point, maybe the recommendation could be amended to allow those permissible land uses, and for the planning partnership to note a specific period of time for which they are until it transitions to the higher-order land uses.
Thanks. In relation, thank you for that. In relation to that point and point 51, and 51, excellent, if we can get some clarity on the acquisitions. In relation though to our backyard being the South West Growth Centre, is that something we can also implement for the current rezonings, for example, in Austral?
Sorry, councillor, could you just repeat the recommendation number?
Number 51, which I'm supportive of, to get timeframes regarding acquisitions. Now, is that something this council will look at implementing? Does it need a motion? Is it something you'll take on board in relation to the Austral precinct, where currently there's owners that have been zoned since 2013 and are restricted on what they can and can't do on their land because it's not a permissible use under the new zonings?
So you're suggesting like a priority acquisition plan or an acquisition plan that says, here's everything we need to acquire in Austral, an indicative timeframe for acquisition based on development trends, infrastructure delivery? If, if that, I know, I think I know what you're saying. I would prefer to take that on notice so that we can consider whether we already do that or not, or through the CEO, maybe another director.
Fine, take it on notice, I'm, I'm happy with that. And then in relation to 36 of this, can we look at that into the, while we're looking at the other one, which is the agri-use in the SEP?
So the recommendation that we've got up on the screen at the moment suggests, leaving recommendation 36 it is, but put a timeframe for when those uses transition to the uses as envisaged under the new zoning. And what we can do is, in relation to your discussion on the 50, what was it again? 50? Is, that could be a, that could be a separate matter in relation to council's own acquisition plans, so you could note that.
Happy for you to take it on notice. I don't need it noted if you're taking it on notice. And that's it.
Can I add a suggestion to recommendation 37?
What do you want to add?
So, Mr Deputy Mayor, 37 relates to the sort of developing sympathetic facilities to the heritage and character and history of the Lutonam Village. Can I also include something in there about protecting the heritage buildings and protecting the, the heritage that we currently have in the village there?
We can certainly add that. The, the, those heritage items are already protected under the Liverpool LEP, so the recommendation could be to ensure that if the SEP's going to override our LEP, those same provisions get put into the SEP so that those heritage buildings are protected in perpetuity.
If there's nothing further, I'm happy to move the motion.
You're happy to move it?
I'm happy to second it.
Happy to second it.
You seconded?
So, Mr Deputy Mayor, can I move a foreshadowed motion?
Okay. Yeah, you can.
So can I move a foreshadowed motion that is pretty much exactly the same, but it takes out the, takes out delete recommendation 21 regarding zero carbon neutrality and recommendation 22, retain low rather than zero carbon, and I'm very happy to explain why.
Okay. Now, we move the, the recommendation, the, the foreshadow motions before who's with, who's what, and after the motion. Yeah, first, first I need to second it. For you one. Yes?
I'll second it.
Okay. Now, all, all accepted the recommendation and what is on the screen, what Tony said and Rhodes?
Sorry, can I just?
Yes. Yeah. And anybody want to speak about the shadow motion?
Now, I'd like to speak for my motion, if that's all right.
Yes, just a minute, because she moved it. Yes.
She hasn't moved anything, it's a foreshadowed.
Sorry, through, through the acting CEO, can we just get clarity?
Okay, Tony. You speak.
Yeah, and I think we do need clarity, I think if you're going to go to recommendation nine.
Who?
Hold on.
Where's the? Yes.
Recommendation nine, that we remove the set mandatory affordable housing targets for new developments.
Okay.
So are you removing that out of yours, councillor Karianna as well? Remove recommendation nine? Okay, thanks.
Okay.
All right. Because we don't want to ensure there's mandatory affordable housing, exactly what you asked for.
Councillor Kariando.
Sorry, has?
Mr Deputy Mayor, thank you. I'd like to speak for the motion.
Yeah.
Thanks. Firstly, to everyone involved, thanks for the input. Yes, I know the, the manager was saying of planning, strategic planning, was saying this is our document, it's our document because of all the work that has been put together by everyone, including yourself and the staff from council. It's also the community's document because our job's made easier when you actually read paperwork as well and then give us ideas of where we should be looking, and then we can make an informed decision. In relation to the motion itself, I think we've captured all the, sorry councillors, thanks. I think we've captured pretty much everything that we needed to, but the beauty of having the extension of another couple of weeks is if we have missed something, there's still an opportunity for anyone to let us know that we've missed something, and then we'll try our hardest to actually get it in as part of the submission to ensure that we do get this right. And I was really, really, really hoping that this was going to be unanimous, but it looks like it's not going to be. There's two conflicting motions here. Pretty much we want the same thing, but what we're going to argue about and, and go on about here is about this, what is it? That carbon neutral emissions thing that everybody keeps talking about. Why, there, there is an issue out there, and we understand that carbon is an issue, and everybody is talking about it, and I'm not discounting it and saying it's not an issue for us and we shouldn't be doing anything about it. Federal government is related, is responsible for that, there are policies in place. It was funny when Mr Turnbull was the Prime Minister and he signed the carbon, the Paris Agreement, everybody was high-fiving him. When he left, everybody all of a sudden doesn't like this agreement, so I'm not sure if it was about the person or the actual agreement. We need to do something, there's an agreement in place from the feds, stick with the current agreement that they got. I don't want to see our community burdened when it comes to going above and beyond what even the government wants us to do. There is a cost to this, and you will be paying the cost. Everybody says, do you want to do something about the carbon and the emissions? Everybody says yes. When they say, if it's going to cost you 10 or 20 or 30 or 100 or 200, you want to do something about it, everybody says no. Why should you be burdened? Your properties, your life, everything that you've held on to out there, why should you be burdened with the cost? Because all of a sudden now, we don't want low, we want zero. I don't think it's fair on us or our community that we actually go in there and say it should be zero. Other than that, hopefully we've got it right. If anything needs to change, please be in contact, and if all goes well, we will then see that happen. There is one question, and there's a bit that I do want to add on to my motion, if it's possible, and it relates to Dwyer Road. Am I able to put in there that should the government not rezone or not give any clarity on the rezoning from there, that council immediately start doing a precinct plan for that area?
Through the acting CEO, no, because the, it's within the Eritropolis SEP area. Through the acting CEO, no, because the, it's within the Eritropolis SEP area. So effectively, the government's doing the precinct planning work for that area. But what we can suggest is the council's keen commitment to see that area develop. Following any decisions that are made, further discussions can be had at a council meeting on that matter.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Okay, Tony. Now we put it on.
Sorry, can I speak to my foreshadowed motion, Mr Deputy Mayor?
We put it this and after, if, if, no. Sorry about this. Yeah, now we put it on the original motion for vote. Who's with? Okay. Means all right, your shadow motion collapsed. Thank you. Now we take ten minute races, please. Now, CEO, zero one.
Move that way, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Second it.
Yep, move first, second it. But, but the vote all, all with except the carried. City Economy and Growing Report, E G R O W one, page seventy-seven.
I just have a few questions for that.
Yes.
Before I move a motion. I just want to know what new fees and charges has council implemented? And how have these fees and charges affected housing affordability? So basically, in established areas throughout the LGA, what has the increase been to seven elevens been? What has the increase been, seven eleven?
Mr Moore?
Mr. Through the CEO. Perhaps I can get some clarity, are you referring to increases just in relation to affordable housing or across the board increases with seven eleven contribution?
Across the board, like just roughly throughout the LGA. If you could actually tell me separately, the affordable housing and the non-affordable, please.
Yeah, okay. Look, I'll have to take that on notice to give you an accurate answer. But our contributions are indexed and different plans index in different ways. Sometimes it's CPI increases on a quarterly basis. And in other plans, particularly in the greenfield areas, it's based on a land value increase index and a construction increase index. So there's, there's a mixture of things going on in terms of the way in which we increase the contributions simply to keep up with the cost of delivering the infrastructure that we're collecting that money for. It's, you know, it's vitally important that we do increase the contributions. Otherwise, we, we have a plan that, that, you know, commits to certain infrastructure, but we wouldn't have the bucket of money to deliver those. But I can absolutely give you a more accurate answer if I could take that on notice.
Okay, then I'd like to wait till that more accurate answer comes through and defer, if I could move to defer until March to include the answers. So I can have a look at the answers that will be forwarded. And I would like it to include the seven eleven and compliance levy, please.
Okay.
I have a motion.
Shadow motion?
Yep.
Yes.
Or, or if, what I would suggest is that we defer and have a councillor workshop on this. That's the next one.
I'll second councillor Ayard's motion.
Second councillor Ayad, okay.
In, in that, and if I can just quickly, when it does come back, the policy, previously we attempted to ask some questions around the compliance levy and whether or not we could defer that to occupation certificate. My understanding was no. Given that now we found a way, and I thank staff for finding a policy to be able to do instalments for section seven elevens, is that something now we can do for compliance levy as well?
Mr Moore?
Yeah, Mr.
And that can be taken on notice as part of the report that comes back.
So if we could add that in the compliance levy also, please.
I would like to foreshadow as per the book and.
Foreshadow?
No, no, that's the motion.
Yes.
And speak against this one. And I'll tell you why, I'm happy, I, I put this up. So it was basically in regards to, I guess, making it easier for people who don't have ways and means to pay their contributions and giving them options as to make payments. If we want to look at doing that for other fees, absolutely happy to do that. If, you know, if it provides people with better financing options or, you know, it, it means we don't hit them in the back pocket as hard and we stagger that, happy to do that. But there's no reason why we can't approve what's on the book and start giving people relief.
Can I respond, Mr Deputy?
Just a minute, who's second it?
I'll second that one.
Yeah. Yes.
Just in relation to, and I'll take on board the comments from councillor Hagerty, I'm more interested in the new fees that this council has put on. This council, and when I say this council, as in council, has put on, not fees that are actually mandatory that has to be paid. We've put on a compliance levy, which is a choosing of this, you know, council, whether it was this term or the last term. So we've put on the seven eleven for secondary dwellings or for the granny flats. Given that we've put those policies, those fees on, I'd be looking at those fees and see if we can do instalments. The statutory fees, well, they're across the board, they need to be charged. But I think we should be looking at options to give people, if it's a fee that we have newly created and put on.
If, if I may, through the chair. Councillor Hagerty, I, I'd really like your support on this because it needs to be a proper decision and we don't want this to keep coming back and forth. It's already, I mean, this resolves for, for it to be exhibited. So before it goes on exhibition, I think it's very important that councillors have the answers to the questions that I've asked and that councillor Hachidi has asked, which were, if you'd like, I'm happy to repeat, in established areas throughout the LGA, what has the increase, increase been to seven elevens? And what new fees and charges has council implemented? And how have these fees and charges affected housing affordability? I think these are key questions that need to be answered before we can make an informed decision.
Okay. Yes, there. Through, through the, through the chair, can I just, by way of clarification, to make sure I do bring back what it is you're after? With the seven elevens, you're looking just at what increases there have been in seven eleven contributions and I suppose any new seven eleven contributions? That's the, that's the question. Is it, and other than that, it is any new additional fees and charges across the board, including the compliance levy?
Yes, councillor.
My bare bag is the compliance levy.
Yeah. Councillor Hagerty, you want to say something?
No, I've, I've put a motion up there, I guess, okay. If we have questions, we've got plenty of time before the meeting and in briefings to ask them. It's just disappointing that they get, and I understand that sometimes you don't get the opportunity to, but I do encourage councillors to come to briefings and ask questions and send emails with questions so that we can come to council and make a decision rather than defer things.
Anyway, we put the motion and vote. Who's with? One, two, three, four, five, four. Okay, means the foreshadow collapsed. Okay, thank you. Now, E G R O W two, two. Eighty-two, page eighty-two. Yes?
Talking about E G R O two? E G R O two, I'd like to defer that. Sorry. Didn't see the light. I'd like to defer this to our councillor workshop. Before we make a decision, I believe we need a workshop. And I'll argue my case.
I'll second that.
Who's second it? Yes. Okay, we put it on vote.
You want me to speak for it?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
If you please.
I, and I'm sure the rest of you have only just got this. It's a two hundred and fifty-six page document that we received last Thursday. I've tried to go through it and there are issues there that particularly about, let me see, urban heat syncing, solar access, shadowing, all of those things that we discussed that I thought should go into the DCP. I can't find them. I haven't got the time to wade through two hundred and fifty-six pages of document, documentation, to see if that's there. So if we could have a very short workshop, a couple of hours, I can ask my questions and you can decide that, yes, they are in there, councillor. I'm happy to go with it. But I think because this has been an issue that many residents have asked about at various community forums, and I'd like to make sure that we cover those issues. That's the reason for the deferment. And if we can have a workshop as soon as possible, I really appreciate that.
Once again.
Through the deputy.
Yes?
Yes, thank you very much. I would like to support councillor Hall's recommendation. The DCP, we've been waiting for such a long time to be able to have our shot at the DCP. We tell our constituents that, you know, I think we can adjust things in our DCP. Council staff tell us, well, we can look at that in the DCP. Give us our chance, we want to look at it all in the DCP.
Yes, Mr.
Through your chair, I just wanted to point out, we did hold a briefing with councillors on page eighty-four. There's a short summary of that back in, I think it was November last year. So this item was deferred previously for a briefing. We did, we did hold that briefing, but very happy to, to have that briefing again.
Unfortunately, I wasn't here at that time.
Can, you can take this with notice, but can I get who attended that briefing, please?
Okay. We put the motion and vote.
So can I ask a question? If this is, if deciding on this is deferred, is there sort of any impacts on actual sort of operational stuff? Okay.
Okay, we put it in vote, who's with? One, two, three. Okay. Carry it. E G R O W three.
I have a motion.
Page eighty-seven. Yes, what's the motion?
Yes, I just moved the motion that council continue to engage in opportunities to participate in organisations such as West Rock, to continue to encourage and educate people about the outdoor smoke and smoking zone laws. I feel that, you know, we really don't have another option. There are New South Wales health laws and rules and regulations. But, you know, until they become more supportive and they only educate and try to encourage people not to smoke, as much as I'm dead set against smoking, I just can't see any effective way that we can do this without education and encouragement. That's it.
Who's second? Yes, councillor Hall. Anyone wish to speak?
Are we also receiving and noting the report?
Yeah.
Good idea, receiving and noting the report.
Anyway, we put it for vote. Who's with? One, two, three. Yes, numerous, carry it. E G R O W four, page ninety-two.
May I ask a question? And I need to refer to the confidential submissions that were made. And I won't mention anything in there except to ask, were they taken into account into the final DCP that was, is now in front of us?
Mr Smith?
Through the acting CEO, yes, they've been taken into consideration. If you refer to page one hundred and four of the agenda, which provides a summary of the submissions, that includes the submissions that are covered in the confidential attachment. And the reason they're in the confidential attachment is it contains the personal details of the submitters. As you will have a look through submission one, two, three and four, and it provides an officer comment on whether the submission, what was suggested in the submissions, has been supported by officers or not supported by officers.
Any question? Who put it for vote? Who's with? One, two, three, four, carry it. E G R O W oh five, page one oh nine.
Yeah, I've got changes to this. I have changes to, I have a motion with recommendations.
Yes, what do you?
That the council endorsed the intermodal precinct charter with the following amendments. A.
Yes.
Where it says to ensure through collaboration and intermo, with the intermodal company, so that the negative impacts are minimised and financial mitigation offers are considered and utilised to improve the health and safety of residents in Liverpool.
Okay. Who's second it?
I've got more, I've got more, we'll wait till the type.
Mr, Mr Hall, yes. Yeah, what's more?
So that was A. To ensure through collaboration with the intermodal company so that the negative impacts are minimised and financial mitigation offers, offers, sorry, are considered and utilised to improve the health and safety of residents in Liverpool. I want to strike out B altogether.
A, B? Okay.
And then C.
C?
Where it goes to minimising adverse, adverse impacts on the health of the community and cross out economic development.
Okay, what about C?
That is.
Yeah, continue.
That's B, C, to minimise adverse impacts on the health of the community, full stop. So it's all, all the same up until that final statement. So it's to provide assist, advice to assist in any council submissions on development or modification applications relating to the intermodal development with emphasis on minimising adverse impacts on the health of the community.
Okay.
D remains the same.
So can I just clarify something very quickly, councillor?
Yes.
How is that different to the, to section four point one, which outlines the functions of the intermodal?
This is in the actual charter that I'm working on, in the things that they've got in the charter.
That's, that's what I'm looking at as well. So there's section four, functions in the charter. Four point one outlines the functions and one of those is four point one C, which is to provide advice to assist in any council submissions on developmental modification applications relating to the intermodal development with emphasis on minimising adverse impacts and supporting economic development.
We're looking at four point.
Four point one C.
Four point one?
Four point one C, well, I'm just changing them as they've been put into the book. Four point that C. As it is to provide, so this is four point one C, right? To provide, provide assistance, the impacts on health in the community. D, to develop partnerships with relevant stakeholders, environment groups and key organisations. And, that's okay. And then E, to make recommendations to council regarding the achievement of positive and negative outcomes for the residents of Liverpool.
Okay. Anyone want to speak against?
Yes, wait a minute, we're still going.
I'm thoroughly confused.
I thought you stopped. Yeah, continue.
Taking a breath.
Continue.
No, forget about F, we've ruled that out.
It's all right.
So.
There is another part that we have to change in seven point one. We need that to be two councillors, not one councillor. And seven point three, we want that to read appoint a selection committee to appoint up to five voting community members.
Two councillor?
Then on page one one four, just so that they know that I'm still talking.
Two councillor, then this, or one?
We write on page one one four, eight point one.
I think so. It's supposed to do much. One councillor, yeah.
We need it to read, the quorum must include one councillor and any councillor present, not a member, may substitute the missing councillor to make up a quorum. And then continue on. And then eight point three, cross out the word wherever possible, so that it re- just reads recommendations of the committee will be made on the, on the basis of a majority consensus.
Okay. Still on?
Can I make an addition?
Certainly councillor.
Uh, that we appoint councillor Hachidi to the committee.
Now, I, I'll, um, as much as I want to, I think by the time this committee's up and running, I'll be on holidays somewhere far from Liverpool.
Okay.
And, um, just as that continues on, it says chairperson.
Can I move us per book?
No.
Yeah, you can.
I'll move us per book.
Okay, um.
Last one?
Yep, this is the last one. It's on the top of page five. The chairperson must be called to resolve a matter. If there is.
Yeah?
Just going to second councillor, but let's motion.
You seconded? Good. But bitter, uh, I think Mr. Hall seconded. Okay, no worries. Who's against it?
I think that's it.
Who want to speak against?
I'll, I'll speak for, for in all seriousness, and I know that we're, people just want to move on. There, there are some changes in there that I see merit in, um, and I think council should support. It's easier to just say move the book and then not really know what happens in the committee meeting. Things like being able to substitute an alternate councillor when one's not there is important. Most times, as we know from committees, we don't get quorum. So people that have gathered, taken their time out, staff, everybody else, um, sometimes just sit around the table and we get nothing done. There, there are merits to some of the changes that are proposed. Um, I think we should not just discount it all. I think we should work together to look at these recommendations, how they're made, take on board, um, if not all, most of them. Most of them make sense and I'd be supportive of most of them. But if I get the option of either not supporting it altogether or supporting this, I'm going to go with all these changes.
Anybody wish to speak?
No.
I'll speak to my motion.
Yes?
Um, councillor Hachidi is right. The, the, the problem that we've got with committees is when they become just, um, word fest, you know? No, no action is ever taken. The only way that we can get action taken by consideration from our community members is by putting in place actual things within the charter that makes them work. Nothing is more frustrating than not having a quorum. And I'd like to point out that these suggestions have been made by a councillor who attends regularly all the committees. The suggestion to take it by the book is by a councillor who doesn't turn up to any of them. Please, please, listen to the advice of people who do attend.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, yes.
Point of order.
I retract any statements that might have offended.
Please, uh, Deputy Mayor.
Yep.
I apologize if I've offended, uh, the councillor, but it is very frustrating to have somebody say by the book. And, you know, you've got to be there to understand the problems that these committees have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Through the Chair, I just have a question.
Yes?
Um, if the councillor can please clarify, so you want two councillors on the committee? A councillor who's not a member of the committee can fill in for a councillor that is a member of the committee.
That's right.
But a member of the public who's part of the committee
Hmm.
cannot have another member of the public whom.
No, I think that's the general rule.
Okay, I get it. Can we just have different wording there? That's, I think that's open to interpretation.
Uh, the quorum must include one councillor and any councillor present, although not a member of the committee.
I think it should read.
Of the committee.
A member.
Of the committee, committee.
Yep.
Although not a member of the committee, may substitute the missing member to make up the quorum.
Anyway.
Sorry, can we just remove the first not, although not? So although a member of the committee
No, not.
May not substitute the missing member to make up a quorum.
No, any councillor, the problem we've got is that sometimes you just can't get enough people at the quorum.
I understand that, but I think it makes more sense the other way with the not in the next sentence.
Can I reread it again just to make sure?
I think it just reads better, makes more sense that way.
Um, the quorum must include one councillor and any other councillor present. Let's put in the word other.
Okay, we put it on, on vote, please.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Who's with? One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three. Why you put, uh, one, two, three, four, five? Lose. Okay.
Yeah, if you could record me as voting again.
Okay.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Okay, reported.
Same as he, Deputy Mayor.
E G R O W five, page one oh nine. Yeah, yeah, we done that. Number, number six.
Uh, I have to, I declare an interest.
Huh?
I'll leave the room. Are we up to the grants?
No.
Oh, parking.
Yes, number six.
Page one twenty.
One twenty.
Um, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Yes?
I would like to move what's in the book.
You sure? The, the recommendation?
Yep, with the exception of one sentence.
Oh, yes.
On page one hundred and twenty-one, one B.
Yeah.
I would like that wording changed to
To what?
Identify locations within a hundred metres of Liverpool's train station, which council owns or can acquire for a car park.
Uh huh.
And for this to be reported back in the March council meeting.
I'm happy to second that motion.
Okay, who seconded?
Caliendo.
Caliendo.
Through the Chair.
Yeah, yes.
Sorry, um, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The previous motion on the screen, it appeared as lost. Is that correct?
No.
Yeah.
No, we.
No, no, no.
It should be one.
Do you want to recall it?
It was one.
Just to clarify, I think the foreshadowed motion was lost in their vote.
Yes, Liverpool shadow motion is lost. Okay. Now we, we put, uh.
Can I suggest to the mover and second, uh, you're asking for this report to come back in March? Um, the agenda for staff, I think closes in about two and a half weeks. Is that going to be enough time to get a report?
On March?
Any informed report?
I'm happy for it to come back in April, but I just assumed
Okay.
that the, um, research had already been done and that the locations would, could be easily identified within that timeframe. That's what I assumed. So if management advises otherwise, I'm happy to change it to April. But I do prefer March, please.
We put it, uh, in vote.
Question first.
Huh?
Just a question through you Deputy Mayor. Can we achieve that report back by March?
March?
Mr. Moore?
Through the CEO, that's really a matter for the property services team, but I would say that is very, very tight to identify a site, do some due diligence, uh, in that timeframe.
Let's do April, happy.
Okay. We still voted in vote to defer it, yes?
Uh, but what are we voting?
Huh? Who?
So, uh, sorry, through the Chair, I think the wording can be improved.
Yes.
So I'm supportive of the recommendation, if that could be put in there, minus
Minus.
the one B.
Sorry, just to clarify, my understanding was.
Councillor adopts a Liverpool city centre strategy, okay.
Yeah, so my understanding of the, the motion that I was supporting is adopts the recommendation, but then when you go back into the executive summary and you see one and two, keep those, but in B, um, identify locations and report back by April. Yep.
Who seconded?
Second that, Deputy Mayor.
You seconded?
Okay, can I just clarify? If we have removal of one B, I want cha- I don't want complete removal, I want the change of one B.
Which one?
So I E
Yeah.
that the item be deferred till the April council meeting to identify locations with a hundred metres of the station that council owns or can acquire to support a car park. It's already got it here, so I'm just removing, should be, there be constraints on Peery Street? That's the only thing I'm removing.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to clarify.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Sorry, just through the, the acting CEO, just for clarity. Um, so the, the actual, um, parking strategy has a short term conditional action in there that says what you're suggesting. So what we've taken on board is the resolution is, the recommendation is per the book, is that council adopts the strategy. Within that strategy, um, we've taken on board the December two thousand and nineteen resolution of council, which says, uh, what you're suggesting. So I'm comfortable if council was of a mind to adopt the strategy now. Within that strategy, there's a action in there that requires council to do what you're suggesting. All we do is bring it, instead of a short term action, it becomes a very short term action to come back, um, in April. So my recommendation to council would be adopt the strategy, but report back to council for the April meeting on locations within a hundred metres where council could acquire. So we're just putting that board.
Okay, I'd be happy with that.
Yeah.
And, uh, only that, I don't want any more time to be wasted on Peery Street. I don't want to wait another twenty years for this car park to be, to come to fruition.
You're still young, don't worry.
In Liverpool.
You're still young, don't worry.
Okay, I'm happy for the report to come back in April and for us to forget about Peery Street. Thank you.
Okay. We put it on vote, yes? Who's with? Okay, carry it. Now, yes.
Call O one?
Yeah.
Move that way, Deputy Mayor.
Excuse me?
You go.
Councillors, before we move on to the reports from the community, um, section, I'd like to ask, um, Ms. Espinoza to enter just to guests who have joined us.
Yes, where is you?
Um, thank you, thank you through you, um, Chair. There are two guests with us this evening. Um, barrister Scott Nash, who's in the, um, public area. Um, he's available to answer questions later during confidential as required. And there's also Mr. Adam Dancy in the front row, um, a solicitor from local government, New South Wales, who will also participate, um, and be available to answer questions as required. Um, unfortunately, they were not here earlier to introduce, um, as they are practising solicitors and lawyers. So as I've arrived late, I'm introducing them to you now. Thank you.
Now, City, Community and Culture, C O M, one.
Yeah, move that way, second, Mr. Deputy.
Yes, fair seconded, okay. We voted in vote. Okay, carry it. Second one, City Corb, C O R B, one.
Move that way.
Seconded, thank you.
Okay. Who's with? Carry it. Third one, C O R B, two. One forty-six.
Move that way.
Questions?
Yep, who seconded? Okay.
Questions?
Yeah, who's with?
No, que- we've got some questions, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
You have question?
Yes, I have questions.
Ah, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
This, this is regarding reducing the red tape, development policy, standards, charters, procedures and strategies. That's correct. Right. Uh, the question I have is if it's obvious that something in those standards or procedures needs to be changed because of residents' input or councillors may have some issues with it. Once these procedures become standards, they are then part of the operational concerns of the CEO. And really councillors have little input into that. I'd like to ensure that there is some input in some way. So if we're concerned of a particular procedure or a, a standard, that we are able to have an input into that and may be modified if necessary. I don't want to take anything away from the CEO or cause any, any, uh, you know, points of difference. It's just simply, there may be times when we've missed something and we need to look at the procedures or the standards and say, look, this isn't working, we need to change it. So is that possible legally?
I see no reason why that wouldn't be legal.
Legally? Yes. Any more question?
Yes, I have a question in regard to, um, uh, Vicky, who spoke, was it Vicky that spoke earlier? Vicky Andrews, who spoke earlier on this, uh, motion, who raised issues about, um, the difference between the library and the museum and that the artefacts and the paper items of the books are registered in the right way. Uh, I haven't had a chance to read if that is what is going to be happening. Can I have some assurances from council now that, um, that the issues raised by, uh, by Vicky in the comments to council, that, uh, we've got that in order?
I, I'm very happy to give that assurance and I can provide you with further information, um, from our professional library staff that will allay those concerns.
And the other item that she raised was that the library staff, are they the people who are making the decisions about the museum pieces? Because they wouldn't be trained in the same cal- category or calibre?
All of our library staff and all of the, um, collections are governed by a set of standards that are set by the governing bodies, uh, overseeing both libraries and museums. They seek to, to promote best practice and we will certainly ensure that we adhere to those standards and that we try to promote best practice.
So there is no opportunity for pieces going missing?
None.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, you can.
Yep, so my understanding is that this red tape reduction programme, project, whatever you want to call it, the idea is that we're reviewing, we have a lot of policies, lots and lots of policies, perhaps we have too many. Let's have a look at them, can we combine some into others? And for others, if they don't need to be policies, we're effectively downgrading them to, to what we're seeing here, which is standards and, and procedures. And while the document, for the most part, is exactly the same, it's actually a benefit to downgrade them from policies because the only way a policy can be updated is through a motion of council. So if you want to delete the word end or you want to change something from number four to number six, you then have to go through the process of putting it before council, debating it and passing it. So the idea here is that to make it much more easier, the documents themselves aren't effectively changing. It's the process to update and add them and, and review them. Is that correct?
That's correct. Um, so it could be done through both a formal process and an informal process of negotiation and discussion with the CEO. But if you want, if councillors are so minded and want it to become a formal process, they can ask a question with notice at any time.
Well, I'll note that the, um, the federal parliament has a libraries committee, which is, which is as exciting as it sounds. Um, and, uh, they do something similar there, so.
What did it? Okay, we take it as a point. Okay, we put it for vote.
Uh, just before, before you do that, I've got some additional questions.
Yeah, why not?
On, on the actual on, on the actual, uh, proposals for the policies and the standards, are they up for discussion? Through the CEO, uh, through.
Yeah. That's a matter for councillors to decide.
I, I've just got a couple of questions on, for instance, the, the policy on, or the standard, on footpath nature strips and that probably should be addressed to director Peter Patterson. The question is, we're talking about glyce- I can't pronounce it, glyphosate, the weed killer material. Our policy is not to use that, uh, other than on hard surfaces. Will that be the case? I'm, I'm concerned that that isn't actually happening. And, and in some previous, uh, times gone by, we have actually used that material in place of whippersnippers and we sprayed it on the edges of curb and guttering, concrete footpaths and so on. And instead of getting a neat edge, you end up with a metre wide dead zone of dust, dirt and soil. Uh, and this policy here says that the only time you can use that is on hard surfaces. It actually says multi-lane roads. Are we going to stick to that?
Mr. Patterson?
Through the chair, I'll, I'll need to take that on notice, Council Hall. We do use glyphosate in a whole lot of different, in a variety of examples. And we do use it on edges, garden edges around trees to prevent ring barking of trees, et cetera. So we are using it in a variety of, of areas, so not just hard surfaces. To not use it would be a lot more of a costly process for us in regards to having to whip a snip and, and just the, the additional time and cost that we would incur from that process would be problematic. So, but I will need to take it on notice to just do a bit more of a thorough examination.
Thank you. What, what that concerns me now is this is a, a standard and this standard dictates what's going to happen. But in reality, it is going to be different to what this standard says. So what happens and what's in our policies and procedures may not be what happens in real life, and that's a real concern. So unless we have these spelling out exactly what we are, what council is doing, and this is what I was saying earlier, once this becomes something that this council passes, it now becomes an operational policy and not something that councillors can easily look into. And hence, I am loathe to say, yes, do this, when I have just pointed out that there could be problems unless it's spelt out what happens is, and residents come up to me and say, Peter, look at this, this is not what we expect, but that's a policy, that's a standard.
Can I suggest?
Understand what I'm saying?
Can I suggest, councillor, we move it with the exception of 2.1, 2.3, given that the officers are bringing these standards over the coming months? We just push those towards the end of the line until the answers are given. So I'm happy to move that or if the mover takes that on.
Can I make a comment? I don't know if that's the problem. I think the prob, the problem is the process that once we do, I think you're happy to downgrade them, could be wrong, but it's making sure that they're regularly reviewed and updated, so.
With, from what I'm hearing, there's an issue with two of the policies or that have become standards. Pull them out for now, put them to the end of the line, get the problem sorted, then make them a procedure or standard.
Yes, councillor, I'll.
I'll move that way if the mover doesn't want to take that on.
Okay.
Better take that on if you would like a second.
Yeah, okay, no dramas.
Councillor Hachidi seconded? Okay. We put it for vote? Carried. Now, C O R B, three, budget review.
Can I ask some questions, Mr Deputy Mayor? Just a couple of questions through to the relevant director or through the CEO.
Yes, you can.
Just going to go to the page, there's a page there where we've awarded some contracts to purchase some machinery. That's page 198. And I recall previously council officers were asked, or that department was asked, what machines are needed to ensure we can provide the best possible service for the community. I note on page 198, there is some funding for some reloaders and whatnot. But I use supply and deliver three 24 cube reload compatible, what are they, compactor trucks. It's over a four-year contract. Now, I understand a four-year contract, but if there are things that we need now, are we going to wait another three years before this comes or have we bought those three machines yet? An example.
Mr Nadan?
Probably for Mr Patterson, I reckon.
Yeah.
Mr Patterson?
Council's allocated funds to buy machines that we know that we need. Is that now saying, over the next four years, we're going to get those machines or are we going to get those machines now and trucks?
Through the chair, I would need to take that on notice, please.
No, no dramas. In relation to when council requested a list of machinery that was needed, did that ever come back to council to consider as part of budget? Because we're talking about budget, so we're talking about money allocations. End of day, there's a concern out there, and I'm trying to not cross any lines here, obviously. There's a concern about the machines that we've got in the yard, which is restricting what the yard can do. We know we've got a big community, we know we've got a big area to keep organised. For example, I'm hearing that there's been an excavator off the road for three months. And if I crossing any boundaries here between what I'm supposed to do and what you're supposed to do, but I'm talking about in the context of budget and the need of allocating funds from a budget, there's an excavator that's been off the road for three months. Now, staff want to do their job, but we don't have an excavator. Do you need some funds to get another excavator or to fix this one? Or how can council assist to get the machines that are needed to ensure we can do the job that, you know, the good job that's, that's being done at the moment? And then looking forward to NOM 04, I think it is, I'm going to think about that as well as part of this, what's needed in the yard? What machines?
Mr Patterson, do you want to take that on notice?
All right, I'm probably going to, and if I get in a bit of strife, I do, but I just want to get to the bottom of this. My understanding is that there's about $3 million worth of machines that the yard needs. There's a list here of what the yard needs. I want to give what the yard needs because I've got no doubt that's what they need to street sweep, to pick up the garbage, to pick up whatever it is they need. Am I in a position now, because it is a budget review, to allocate funds for machinery?
Councillor, can I suggest that we take that on notice? We undertake a review and then bring that back again next month?
Well, so I thank you for your suggestion. I asked for something about, and I think it was taken on notice, for a list of machines that were needed about eight or nine months ago, and I'm getting a shake. And if it's coming from councillor Hagerty, it means I'm half right. So, no, I want to allocate some funds and I'm going to propose that we allocate $1.5 million from the unrestricted reserves to that department so that they can work out what list of machines they need, they can go out there and they can buy them, and we get the crew, the machines that the crew need to go out there and keep this city beautiful. So I'll move the, move a motion with the variations, but then a part two, that we transfer $1.5 million from the unrestricted reserves to city presentation. I then obviously have to leave it to whoever, whether it's yourself, Mr Patterson, or you, the acting CEO, to work out what machines are needed, what's the priority. But we need to get machines into the yard because the outdoor crew would need them.
Okay, move to Hachidi, seconded?
I'd like to second that.
You're seconded?
If, if it helps, don't know where this came from, but I've got a list of machines that the yard needs.
Through you, add to councillor Hachidi, Deputy Mayor, can we get a bit of a clarity on what machines are required and the total cost to, if we can get that ASAP? We may need to allocate more funds to get those guys going and doing what they're assigned to do.
Councillors, I'm happy to ask Mr Patterson to initiate a comprehensive review and we'll bring up information back to you as soon as we possibly can.
Thank you, much appreciate it.
And councillor Hachidi, if you have any further information on that, it'd be gratefully received.
Any more question?
Not a problem, Mr acting CEO. So I'm moving with the variations.
Yeah.
And the 1.5 gets transferred from unrestricted to city presentation. And then obviously I can't get involved in the internals of how you allocate that funds, but.
Now we put it on vote?
Sorry, if it's accepted by councillor Hachidi, can we just add there more funds to be allocated if required?
What I, sorry, what I'd suggest we do is we start with that and then at the next budget review.
Start with the first.
And once they've done their review, we then see what we need. Thanks.
Okay, we put it on vote, please. Who's with? Me and carried.
Mr Deputy Mayor, please record me as voted.
Yes, no problem. Now, C O R B, four.
Move that way, thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Yes, who's seconded? Moved by Jeff, seconded?
I have a, a question on this.
Yes.
Considering that it's councillors' due diligence to be engaged with the constituents, with any issues that they raise with council, I was wondering if it would be possible for council to provide a bi-monthly report, say, on, on the constituents' customer service inquiries received by council? So, and, and include the, the details of the actions that council has taken on those particular issues. That would help councillors a great deal in dealing with their constituents and acting on their behalf in due diligence. So it's just sharing the information back to the councillors who are the elected representatives of the community. Do we have a problem with that? Is that possible?
Yeah, take me off as moving it.
Okay.
So can I put up another motion, a foreshadowed motion then? Or maybe a motion if there's no motion at the moment? Do you want to move your motion, Geoff?
Who's, who's seconded with Geoff?
Okay, well, the foreshadowed motion would be direct the CEO to provide bi-monthly reports on the constituents' customer service inquiries received by council. That includes the action taken by councils? By council to all councillors?
Anyway, first, who's seconded with the, the first motion, with the motion?
Second one.
Councillor Shelton is moved, seconded?
Can I suggest that that report go in the CEO report?
I don't know if that's suitable to councillors, is that okay? Or do you want it as a separate report? This is a, what did we say? When did we want it?
Bi-monthly.
Bi-monthly? In the CEO's reports? Happy with that, if every, if all the councillors are happy for it?
You want to say? Yes.
Whatever's easiest.
Through the acting CEO, can I just provide a, a comment to, to guide the councillors? A report can be provided to the councillors. I think the councillors should be aware that council receives about approximately 1,000 phone calls every day. So that's quite a large volume of calls received and actions done. So a report can be provided, I think.
Is bi-monthly not suitable then? Would it be?
I think we could provide it in a form, in a summarised form for the councillors. But to provide, to, to list every single inquiry and action would be quite, quite large.
So what would be included in the summary form?
We could categorise the different inquiries received and perhaps highlight, perhaps difficult issues. I, I think, I think it would just be a bit too onerous to, to outline every single action taken in relation to every inquiry.
Can I suggest if, okay, obviously when a call comes through, you then capture the data and then it's grouped in different issues. Can I maybe, is that how it works in customer service centre?
Yes.
All right. Can I maybe suggest that we, if you need some information, that maybe on the bi-monthly basis, you receive a summary on the top 10 issues? How many people actually were inquiring, for example, about footpaths? Is that one of the top 10 issues? Footpaths, 100 people, stray dog, 200 people.
Can I make?
Lala, 300.
Yep, I'll make a suggestion. I assume that this software has pre-cooked dashboards and reports that the managers use and go up the chain.
That's a good idea.
Perhaps, perhaps we get a briefing on those and we decide what coloured pie chart we want and, and all that, so.
Or perhaps if it is available, it can just be made available to councillors and they can look through it without any additional work to the council staff, just make it available to councillors. And if councillors see something that is an issue to them, they can get that information. Perhaps that would be a better idea? So we could change that, the motion, to direct the DCA, CEO to ensure, no, that's okay.
Direct the CEO, direct the CEO to give councillors a briefing on reports and dashboards available on the platform with councillors to make a choice on what they want to see.
To make available, not to give advice, to make available to councillors, any dashboards available that, for reference to the customer service.
My concern with any, the word any dashboards, I, I think we should get informed first. I think we should be taken through the reports, see what they mean, do what they, if we just open up a whole bunch of reports, there's a listener that we go in and go, what does that word mean? Forty-six of them happened, I'm very concerned whether, we, we don't have the context, we don't understand what they mean, they, they might.
Point taken, councillor, very good point. Okay, so the wording then is to CEO to brief councillors and give feedback, to make available councillors, any dashboards available to give reference to customer service and any feedback in relation to customer service. I think it's a bit double Dutch, perhaps you can just clean up that motion, you've got the gist of what we're trying to do.
Certainly councillor's happy to create a straight line between transparency and accountability with it being practical. Can I seek Mr Maguire's advice?
Through you, acting CEO, I would also suggest in this that what you're probably looking for is, you've got requests coming in, how, what sort of timing is involved in these? And that's oftentimes a source of frustration for people. And that has a bearing on your resourcing and budgets for those sorts of areas. For example, if there's a whole lot of tree branches to be collected or the, or, but we're getting a lot of requests to get mattresses picked up or something like that. So I suspect, I think there is within the systems, particularly in ProMap, we've got an ability to, to identify those particular areas. And I would say that's probably the area, that's the sort of thing that maybe more helps you. And that oftentimes is the source of the complaints that come to me in my role because it's, it's often to do with delays rather than the, the, the fact that some, something is wrong. So, and, and that I think is oftentimes due to budget and staffing resources that need to be identified and which could then help you in your planning in terms of the budget allocations for particular directorates in, in council. So I'd just suggest to you that maybe that's something that, that could be picked up, the number of, not just, not just the number of requests and the areas that they're in, but perhaps also how many haven't been addressed over a particular period, length of time. We've got that data, I think.
Thank you very much, Mr Maguire. I think I'm quite happy with that wording, direct the CEO to brief councillors and give feedback to councillors on any dashboards that are available, to keep councillors informed on the customer service tracking system.
Okay.
Not for you, Mr Deputy Mayor, you can withdraw the motion that previously appears in my name.
You draw?
So we need. So can I just ask a quick question in relation to councillor Rhodes's motion? With the briefing from the CEO, does that, is that also within that six-month timeframe or is that a different timeframe?
Direct the CEO, direct the CEO to brief the councillors, good point councillor, we should put in a timeframe for the CEO to do this briefing to councillors. I would suggest April. Is April okay? Would that be, give the council, the CEO sufficient time? I think it should be pretty much.
Who's seconded for the? Mr Hall, you seconded? Yes.
Can I ask a question, Mr Deputy Mayor, when you're ready?
Yes, you can.
I just, through you, CEO, I just need to seek clarification on something. And there's legal advice in the papers, which is in open, which is great. Now, it says in there that there's some operational issues and there's always that fine line, what's operational and what's not. And I take the advice that's in the papers that says what was proposed earlier was an operational issue which relates to this policy. Now, the advice says it's an operational issue, yep, yet you're asking council to adopt the policy. So why is council adopting a policy that pretty much we don't have much say of what's in because it's going to be operational?
Mr Ng? Mr Young?
Oh.
James? She doesn't.
I'm sorry, I'm at a loss at answering the question. If that's, if you're directing to me, I, I don't understand the question. If you can reframe it, I might be able to assist.
Council can't get involved in operational issues, which I totally understand and accept. The advice states that this policy is an operational policy. So pretty much council, you really don't have much say in what goes in that. Yet the policy is coming to council and has been endorsed by council on about four occasions. As a councillor, am I adopting a policy that I can't, don't have a say in?
Well, my understanding, if I understand this correctly, the policy is at a high level and the recommendation is that within six months there be standards be prepared and brought back to council.
Can I, can I help you out just a little bit? On page 213, there's, and just so that we, sorry, I'm probably speaking a different language. On page 213, there's the customer service and communication policy, which was adopted by council, you can see by council resolution, which shows on 223 in 2002, three, five, 10 and 14. I'm just trying to not cross any boundaries and just to make it clear. Now, this policy, from what I'm understanding, and the ESWS policy is operational policies or operational matters are contained in those policies.
Councillor, what I'm looking at in the papers is a draft document at page 210. And I understand on the papers, that is what council is being asked to adopt. The document 210, 211 and 212. And within that policy or under that policy will be developed an operational standard, which in recommendation two would be prepared within six months to give effect to that document.
Currently, as we sit now, though, the customer service, on page 213, there's a customer service and communication policy. Is that still a current policy of council?
No, it would be replaced.
If council adopts?
Yes, so recommendation one is to adopt the document that I just identified at 210, 211, 212 in place of, that is, to replace the existing policy you've identified, councillor.
Okay, so if council is of a mind tonight not to go with the recommendation from council officers, we're now relying on the policy that's on page 213. Because we still haven't adopted the recommendation.
The current policy appears at 213 and the recommendation is to replace it with the draft at 210, 211, 212 with a view that there be an operational standard prepared to give effect to it within a six-month period.
Okay, can I move a, is that, recommendation being moved? Can I foreshadow one? The council not adopt the draft customer engagement and quality assurance policy? That's the foreshadowed.
Can I ask the questions again? Just put it this way. Sir Deputy Mayor?
Yeah.
I'll address my questions to the CEO. As a councillor's, we cannot involve in operational matter. So how we have now in front of us a policy that's fully operational, to look at it and adopt it if we cannot discuss it? That's the question. That's the question. Your answer.
My advice would be that as a designated policy, council can determine what the content of that policy will be. But it has, the policy would have to be supported by a set of standards that give operational effect to that policy.
How do you want us to adopt a policy that we are not allowed to discuss? It's fully operational? How? Is that not fully operational? Because we are prohibited from discussing operational. And how on earth giving us policies fully operational are probably about to break our waters?
Councillor, I'm happy to address that in that, I guess to understand the policy statement is something that gives a standing, a position, a standard of service. The operational aspect is how do we do that? So the policy statement is, as appears on page 211, at paragraph two. Council was committed to providing its residents and customers with excellent service. That is a policy statement. That is not operational. It's a commitment to provide excellent service. What this council, the councillors then delegate or have no role in, and this is where the second recommendation comes in. There's a six-month period where there will be a framework, a delivery model, operationally, how staff will deliver excellent service across all its areas of operation to residents and customers. So the policy statement is exactly a policy statement. How it is implemented is the operational aspect.
Okay. All right.
Can, can? No, would the, would councillor Hattiti be happy if we put that we do not adopt as number one and leave in number three, take out number two? Direct the CEO to brief councillors? I would like that still to go in somewhere.
Yeah, happy with that if we're not adopting.
Happy with that.
Okay.
I just got to bring these to a head.
Okay, so we'll take out number one and two of the original motion.
I'll withdraw the foreshadowed.
All right.
She's councillor Rhodes taking that on board as part of hers.
Now I put the motion.
Wait a minute till we get it up there.
Councillor Rhodes, seconded by councillor Hall. Who's with? Carrie.
You can record, may I start again?
Yes, we can.
Me too.
And me.
And you two? All right, and you three? No worries. Hmm, okay. CORB five.
Leave that way, Mr Deputy Mayor?
Yep, okay.
Seconded.
Yep. Who's with? Carrie. CORB six, Moorbank, 226.
All right.
Yes.
We would like to move.
You move it?
Yeah, I would like to move a motion, please.
Motion.
Um.
The motion.
Noting that we have received community feedback.
Yeah.
And noting that we have received information that resolves to council the amounts of money that would be required to proceed in this case. I request the CEO, and I didn't write out a motion on this.
Yeah.
We request the CEO to, well, we delegate the CEO to proceed with negotiations, to support the case in cooperation with Raide Moorbank in INC. And make the funds available.
Make the fund available?
Yeah. I seen the email. I was surprised that they didn't print it out for people.
Who's seconded? Mr Hall?
Can I read that out again?
You want to speak?
Can I seek Mr Maguire's advice, please?
Which is, through you, through you, CEO, I think that I would have to question the validity of such a motion. The motion that was passed to the last council meeting in relation to this matter is a valid motion, but you can't really ask council to cooperate with another organisation. You've delegated the fact, you're going to delegate to the CEO to provide funding to that organisation. That's what you've, what you've resolved to do at the last meeting. To put this motion forward now as it stands, I would, I would think would be an invalid motion and couldn't be implemented by council, I'm sorry to say. If, if you're, if you wish to, and the other point I think that you need to make sure is that if you stick with the recommendation, I think you'll find that the, the money can go to the organisation and that's valid. And, and, but beyond that, I think you've got to be very careful because the fact is that council is not a party to those legal proceedings and we have to be really careful in terms of delineating where we are in relation to that, that matter. If we're making basically a donation to section 356 to Raide, then I think we've, then going beyond that, I think it's beyond council's powers. And I would just suggest to you that, that if you, if you, if you, if you try and tie that to this 356 motion, 356 donation to Raide, you may well find that that, that whole motion will then become invalid.
Can I make a suggestion, Mr Deputy Mayor?
Yep.
The motion read, continue the exhibition period.
Thank you.
Due to expire on 10 March 2020. And at the completion of the period, delegate authority to the CEO to progress funding in the event of no negative submissions being received.
That's good. That's better. That's better.
How's that, Mr Maguire?
I, I think that, I think that that's probably a much, much safer option through you, through you, CEO. I think that's a much better.
Happy to, happy to adopt that as the motion. Yes?
Upon which a decision would be made about whether, you know, legal prospects were reasonable. Is that not the case anymore?
No, the legal advice has been submitted to council. I'm surprised the council hasn't printed it out. I've looked for it. It's not within the papers, but the advice was sent from the legal team that has been engaged and they have supplied information in relationship to the costs or the anticipated costs and the direction of council. Would councillors like to have that printed out and given to them perhaps? Can we take a five-minute recess to organ? We have received the information. I'm surprised that it wasn't printed out as a part of the information to be given to councillors.
Any more question? Okay, we put the motions, moved by councillor Rhodes, seconded by councillor Hall for vote. Carrie. Now. Yes, no worries. Okay, committee report? Okay.
Seconded.
Okay. All on vote? Who's in? Carrie. Now.
Councillor Hattiti.
Can I, can I suggest we go into?
Yes.
Do you want it given?
We have question without note.
That's already done.
Question with note?
Just given that we've got visitors here that are probably waiting on an item, is it, do we want to do that now?
Yeah.
Yes, no?
What item are we going to?
There's lots of noms, questions.
Huh?
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
That we quickly jump to noms and everything else be deferred, like, because really it's just questions with notice. So jump to noms, skip through them and then move into confidential, into closed session.
Exactly.
I'd like to move.
Yes.
That we move into noms and then immediately moved into, move into closed session after nom's out of the way.
Who's seconded?
I'll second that.
Okay. Who's second? Now. Yeah, we put it for vote. Who's with? Carrie. Okay.
Nom one.
Now.
And nom one, out of office hours compliance officers. The motion that I've provided there is that we do have an issue in Liverpool that because of our compliance officers working basically office hours, I think it's 8.30 to 4.30, that we're getting more and more reports from constituents directly to councillors that the public are aware that the constituents are known at what time the compliance officers work and, and that is compacting on other things, which is making more complaints in the area regarding people who are not being, abiding with the law. The issues that we have would be in the area of noise. Traffic is a continuing problem. The traffic is compounded because the out-of-hours time for compliance officers when people are coming home or, or going to work. It has been pointed out to me that it only takes one car to be illegally parked in Big Street and that impacts upon the flow-through traffic into Liverpool. And I think all the council staff and indeed councillors themselves would agree how difficult it is to leave Liverpool or get into Liverpool during peak hour times if there is one car that is violated and parked illegally in those out-of-hours times. Another contributing factor is that, as I said, out of the compliance officers' times, we have people coming home. We've got places like Moorbank where we have greater densities and more cars, often without enough car spaces available to them anyway. And the issues are that the people are just parking illegally. We've got people parking in front of driveways. We've got people parking on the curbs as they have to do. And they are not being addressed because the compliance officers aren't there. Now, my motion is very broad and it's open to anybody to contribute to the, the motion. But all I'm asking is that council provide a costing report. I said to the March meeting, that can be, you can tell me when you can feasibly do it for providing on-ground services by compliance officers during and between 7am and 9am and 4pm and 10pm, seven days a week. Two, consider a cost to employ directly such officers under stipulated agreements to the hours needed by council and not subject to overtime rates, perhaps, as a suggestion. Yep. And B, cost in overtime to utilise existing compliance office on a rotational basis to service the out-of-hours requirements of council. And C, maybe a contractual agreement as per the motion that has been provided to council. It's very, very simple. It is only going to get worse as we increase densities and we have more cars. And for as long as we're providing development applications that don't provide even at this stage enough cars for them to be able to park off the streets. We find often that the garages are being taken up with storing all their stuff and it's not even being used as a garage anyway. Putting the motion, that's basically it.
Happy to vote.
Happy to vote, yes. Who's with? Okay, Carrie. Now.
The second nom.
Can we just record that councillor Hall seconded it, did that?
Councillor Hall, yeah. Of course, I know.
The second notice of motion is a wildlife protection special levy. And I want to change my motion.
Now, now we take recession five minutes, five minutes and we for closing, closing recession. Okay?
What?
Five minutes for Tony.
For me?
Yes.
To what?
You finish or not? I thought you finished because we moved the motion.
Yeah, so we're on to the next nom. We're on to motion, nominate, we're on to the motion number two.
Okay, nominated.
All right. Okay, no problems. In this.
Hurry up.
Okay, if we haven't got enough time to do it, I'm happy to put all my nominations on to the next council meeting. Okay, done.
No worries, continue.
Well, if, if, if it's, if it's a pressure to get through thing.
I think.
Quite happy to allow the nominations.
I think the chair is suggesting that we just keep our commentary short. I think the chair is, is suggesting that we just keep our commentary short. We still vote, but we keep our commentary short.
Okay, happy in the next meeting, all right, but continue now.
All right, as I was saying. NOM O two, wildlife protection special levy. I have changed my motion in this, I'll simply read out the motion. Recognise that, council, one, recognise the importance of wildlife protection in the economic and the economic benefits that Australian wildlife continues to contribute through tourism to the local national economies. Two, cross it out. Three, cross it out.
Oh.
Four.
All right.
Cross it out. And number two, nominate a percentage proportion of the environment levy to be used to support wildlife protection through the Liverpool LGA. Three, council provide all reports and communications in relationship to the above work already carried out and/or implemented by council to councillors. There you go.
Okay.
Next a motion.
Any more? Any, any one was to speak against?
Can I suggest councillor Rhodes defers her motion till after the animal shelter comes back and we work out what we're doing with wildlife?
Well, regardless of the next motion, that motion was for the environment levy to contribute to.
Okay.
Happy to move on to the next motion?
Yes.
I'll, I'll second councillor Rhodes' motion to defer to a future council meeting.
You seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. We voted and vote. Okay.
So I'm moving that it get deferred and councillor, the two you seconded.
Okay.
I have a motion I'd like to move for NOM O three.
Yeah.
I thought we had a, an understanding, a convention here. This one's pretty straightforward, I don't think it's controversial. Essentially, the, the metro is going in. The transport for New South Wales has three options. Option number two is the option that they prefer and that is effectively restoring the City via Regions Park Line. And just to, there's been a bit of, I guess, confusion as to what that line's called. I think we make it clear that we want it to be called the City via Regions Park Line. Everyone knows that that has some historical significance. And in the, in the, in the document where it lists the options, it says that that option is to be implemented in 2024. I don't think we should wait for the metro to open, I think we should wait for as soon as Bankstown.
Can you just tell us a motion councillor, I was hurried up.
Rhodes, I haven't been going on for 10 minutes, okay? I kept it brief and I've gone to the point, I haven't rambled on. Right, now, I think everyone gets that and happy to put that to a vote.
I have a foreshadowed that I'd like to put up, please, I've already given it to-
Yeah, what's the foresh-
Mr Georgakis?
Yes.
Okay, and that's my foreshadowed. That council immediately make a submission to Transport New South Wales to lobby for an express service from Liverpool to Bankstown, for this express service to be put in place before 2024, which is the opening of the South West Metro. Commissioner started to assist the express service from Liverpool to Bankstown, identifying what infrastructure is required. And if we could have just have the next part, please. Congratulate the New South Wales, New South Wales Government on the construction of the South West Metro and its commitment to bring it to Liverpool in a long-term master plan and continue to lobby for the South West Metro to be extended to Liverpool and to the Western Sydney Airport. And five, make a submission to the relevant bodies advising them of council's position.
I think that's fantastic and I'm happy to add that to mine.
I will second that happily.
The only, the only issue I have with yours councillor is the Regions Park. What's that Regions Park?
So when they close Bankstown, there's going to be a rail line that still exists from Bankstown to Liverpool. And they've put out submissions, what do we do with that? One of the options is that you basically continue to catch a train from Liverpool to the city via the Regions Park Line. The other options are you catch a train to Bankstown, you get off and then you catch another train that goes back around the loop to the city, which doesn't work, or you get on the metro. This basically restores, puts us in the position we're in now, where we have two express routes to the city via Granville, via Bankstown, this will leave us with via Granville, via Regions Park.
How long will that take people from Liverpool to travel to the city?
Uh, well, when the Regions Park Line used to exist, it, it took about 45 minutes. It actually was a genuine express line.
How many stops were there? Because currently I've calculated 11 stops.
I'm, I don't, I don't decide what stops trains stop at.
Can I suggest to councillors, given that councillor Hagerty hasn't got a second yet, that they combine, you second councillor Hagerty's motion, we lobby for both, hopefully we get one and then we all are doing what's in the best interest of Liverpool.
Yeah, if my wording isn't changed.
Motion for councillor Hagerty.
Isn't changed, if councillor Hagerty-
Motion for councillor Hagerty. Who seconded first?
I can, I second councillor Ayat's foreshadows.
You seconded, and what about councillor Hagerty?
I think, as I said, I think it's a fantastic motion, happy to combine it with mine.
Okay, we want the motion for Hagerty on vote, who's with?
The foreshadowed go first, I'm a little bit confused.
Combine together.
But you didn't answer my question, are you changing anything or exactly as is?
Huh?
Exactly as is, okay.
We combine together, huh? Yes, that's right. Who's with?
Beautiful by Patterson's support.
Newman lastly. Now.
I'm happy to move NOM O four.
No, you're not, because it's mine, thank you.
Who's with?
No.
Yes, you seconded?
No. It's mine, I'll move it.
You move it?
Thank you.
You.
Sir Deputy Mayor.
And who seconded?
And I thank the comments from the CEO in relation to this, that we've started, we're doing and everything else. But I still ask councillor's support of the actual motion, where we actually put this plan in place, we actually go out there, we do the works, we clean it up. And in relation to things like getting a tree specialist, I know that council has one and it's great. But there are some trees that are falling out, the drainage channels, you can just drive through and there's trees in the verges that are just about to come down. The roots are hanging out, I think we need to really get out there and council has already, because you can tell from some of the verges in the Austral area, that machines have been through the area to probably do some hard spots. Biggest thing that I saw on the day of the, you know, the flooding and the falls out there. Firstly, there was next level, how can I say this stupidity by some people trying to drive through floodwaters? You can't see a road, you can see water everywhere and they still tried to drive through. Monday morning was just like a bomb had hit the place, there was Audis, there was Merks, there was everything that couldn't get through the floodwaters. There was, and I'm no engineer, no expert, but there seemed to be a lot of capacity in the drainage channels, the big ones, and in the creek. But the water was finding it hard to actually get into the creek. So I wasn't able to cross Edmondson Avenue, wasn't able to cross 14th Avenue, wasn't able to get into the actual places. So yes, council looks like have started doing it. I think we really need to get out there and clean out those verges, make them bigger, get rid of some trees unfortunately that need to go. And the driveway crossovers are really important as well.
I'll second that motion.
Yes, I seconded. We put it on vote, who's with? Okay, carried. Now. N O M number five, 314. Yeah?
I'll move that way, I'll keep it brief. Obviously, the, the background sort of explains where it's coming from, as well as the, the substance of the motion. Um, I do just want to add that the main sort of piece of advocacy on this particular issue came from a young person within our community, who has identified this as, as a need amongst the, amongst the other people. And as a, a community with a really high cald population, I think it's really significant that we actually identify that this is something that's out there and, you know, have resources available for migrant and refugee families within Liverpool. Thank you.
Seconded by councillor Hagerty. We put it in, in vote. Carried unanimously. N O M six, media in election period.
Yep, I'll, I'll move that.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Through the chair.
Who seconded?
I just do want to change the wording after reading the CEO memo.
Councillor Hadid, yes.
Um, so if I could do that, um, so subject to the provision of the Local Government Act 1993.
Okay.
In the six months prior to any voting, including pre-poll, that council no longer use any social media channel or any other form of council advertisement, including newsletters, et cetera, to display any name or picture of a councillor.
Okay. Anyone to speak against?
Yeah, I'd like to speak against it. In the Local Government Act, it, it does have pretty clear roles and responsibilities for councillors and one of them is to engage with the community and inform the community. I think that this is one of the channels where we do it for those that turn up to events and, um, you know, open, put shovels in grounds and do things like that. I think that's a good way to let people know that we're, we're building a new park, we're building new tennis courts, such and such. And I also trust that staff are well aware of the provisions during an election period about, and, you know, both during the election period and not during the election period, that they don't be seen as political. I, I trust them, I think they know how to do their job and this is unnecessary.
I'll speak for it.
Yep.
Councillor Ayat. Whilst the Local Government Act may stipulate Act one, two, three, four, I don't want to go through them. This is, what this is about is rest reinforces for us as councillors and councillors' operation that six months prior to election be no media used or anyone would use media to their benefits, be all of us. And I think that's fair enough. What this is doing is just reinforcing that there should be, everybody should be neutral and no media or anyone involved in that election, simple.
I'd like to reiterate councillor Hagerty, that without social media, you can still perform your job and engage with the community.
Okay.
As someone who regularly engages with the community, I do know that, thank you.
Who's with? The first, councillor Ayat. One, two, three, four. Oh, carried, yes. And. Carried, yes. N O M seven, personal matter, 312, 17. This confidential, we take five minutes races and we come back, please. We put it for vote, please. Yes, carried. Yeah, all right, thank you. And with respect to the people, please confidential, after all the races, we don't want anybody to be in the- It's working, yes. C O N F O five. Yes, I declare the meeting, moved by councillor Hatchitt, seconded by Nineteenth councillor Hagerty. First of all, that council. Yes, exactly, yeah. Now. That council acknowledged the considerations and the capacity of the CEO over the, over the course of the term. Second, expresses confidence in the leadership of the CEO. Third, indicates his billets that the newly elected council should be afford the opportunity to determine the CEO. Five, four, first. For the availability of the council determines not to renew the contract of the CEO for the reasons started above in three. Five, notes that the current CEO contract will expire on 18 December 2020. Six, has bear clause 5.2 of the contractor direct mayor to notify that CEO in writing of the decision within 48 hours from the closing, from the conclusion of this meeting. Moved by councillor Ayad, seconded by councillor Kiriando and signed by all of the council. One against is councillor Shaldon. Thank you very much, meeting, meeting close, yes. Sauro.